Honouredness Ordorman, Keith Chapman, Andrew Gibson and Michael Woodall, you're very welcome. Just to remind you councillors, that we are utilising the queuing functionality available on your microphone system if you wish to speak. Members who do want to do so should indicate their intention by pressing the microphone button to automatically be added to the queue. The queue will be visible on the microphone console screen and I invite you to speak at the appropriate time. Microphones will be activated and deactivated automatically. I thought it went very well last time, so I'm sure it will work again this time. Can I have apologies for absence, Jo?
Thank you Chairman. Apologies have been received from councillors Prad Baines, Stephen Broomfield, Mark Cooper, Barry Dunning, Alexis McAvoy and Bill Withers, and from Honourable Alderman Patricia Banks, Chris Carter and Peter Edgar.
Thank you. May I invite members to disclose any pecuniary interests either now or at the point that the relevant matter is reached. Okay, moving on. All members who believe they have a disposable pecuniary interest in any matter to be considered at the meeting must declare that interest and having regard to Part Three, Paragraph One Point Five of the County Council's Members' Code of Contact. They should leave the meeting while the matter is being discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with Para One Point Six of the code. Furthermore, all members with a personal interest in a matter being considered at the meeting should consider having regard to Part Five, Paragraph Four of the code, whether such interest should be declared and having regard to Part Five, Paragraph Five of the code, consider whether it is appropriate to leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with the code. Moving on to Item Three R. Councillor Parker and then I think I've got Councillor Kendall, yes.
I'm not entirely sure whether this is necessary or not. It occurs to me Chairman that we have a motion on the order paper relating to the Pensioners' Winter Fuel Allowance. Now I and I suspect a number of other members are in receipt of such an allowance or have been in receipt of such an allowance. Does that count as a declarable interest, is it personal or personal prejudicial?
The advice I'm being given is you can declare it is a personal interest but it will not affect your right to speak.
... of the £300 winter allowance, I declare a personal interest and I would like to speak.
Thank you Councillor Kendall. May I suggest that any others in that category, we deal with them at the beginning when the motion is called rather than now, if you're happy with that. I can see we're going to have an interesting morning. Moving on, the minutes of the last meeting. Can you confirm the minutes of the meeting held on July the 18th? And are you happy for me to sign the minute book? Moving on to Item Four, Five, sorry. We have no deputations as I understand it, is that correct? And therefore we can move on to Item Five, which is my announcements. I have just a small number of announcements. First of all, dealing with the council itself. I'm delighted to report that the Hampshire County Council Youth Band is to perform at the Royal Albert Hall in the music for youth proms on Thursday the 28th of November. The Hampshire County Youth Band is the only brass band from the entire country that has been invited to perform, a real testament to the quality of the ensemble that we are so proud of. So we'll wait until the 28th of November to see how they actually perform, which I am certain will be excellent. Moving on to corporate operations. The Integrated Business Centre have just achieved accreditation from the Chartered Institute of Payroll Professionals through the Payroll Assurance Scheme. This is no ordinary accreditation. The PAS is a prestigious voluntary recognition developed by the CIPP in partnership with HM Revenue and Customs. Universal Services. This is the 60th anniversary of the Hampshire Outdoor Centres and to celebrate the 60th anniversary, a video scrapbook is being created for visitors' memories. The team are asking anyone who has a story of what impact our centres might have had on their life to share this story. Moving on to my diary. I attended the Farmer Air Show in July, not long after our last council meeting. I worked it out that this is about the 12th airshow I've attended. So I think what's important to note about it is it happens in our county and it is the most prestigious aerospace airshow in the world. It is a huge benefit to our business businesses in Hampshire involved in aerospace to have that airshow here every two years and I was pleased that the council had a presence there and I was also able to visit the owners of the airport who also gave a very good brief of their future activities. The following week, I visited the New Forest and Hampshire show and during the show, which was highly successful, back on its feet after Covid in a big way, good number of visitors and good weather. And at the show, the New Forest District Council commemorated their 50th anniversary. And when I went to the anniversary, I realised that this was a slightly interesting or almost depressing opinion that I had, that when I first became a district councillor in 1983, the New Forest District Council was only nine years old. Anyway, moving on. Last Monday, the week, I visited Fairham and Gosport to see firsthand the collaborative work that takes place between the Hampshire 2050 Directorate and other directorates in the organisation. And this is the first of a number of visits I'm hoping to make to the council's various activities outside Winchester. I said when I took over as chairman, I was keen to do this, largely because when I was leader because of Covid, I really did not get around the county in the way I would have liked. So I was delighted to start off in Gosport at the Discovery Centre and to see the excellent work that's been done in developing that Discovery Centre. And it has all sorts of activities from helping young people to actually helping vulnerable residents as well. I then went on to a county farm, a chilling, and again, that was a really fascinating experience, bearing in mind the work that is being done to try to take advantage of the new funding procedures for farms and to actually reduce the amount of nitrates being discharged into the solent. I then went on to the Bridge Mary Library and saw the climate change programme and how we as a council are working with local groups to promote the reduction of CO2 emissions. And finally, I was able to travel on one of three electric buses operating on the route, which was pioneered by my colleague councillor Mel Kendall when he got this route up and running some years ago. And I was able to travel on one of the three electric buses. Excellent buses, they operate without recharging up to 14 hours a day, which means that they just discharge, get charged up at night. And finally, yesterday, I was present at the opening of the new village shop in my division of East Boulder in the presence of His Royal Highness, the Duke of Gloucester. A really pleasant event. The shop itself was only one of two that got funding from central government for what they've done in the round a year or two ago of the community purchase scheme. Finally, I'd like to wish, I'd wish to express my gratitude to my vice-chairman for stepping in and deputising for me at the British Empire Metal Presentations and our civic engagements while I was on annual leave. Thank you very much, Anne. Moving on, Item Six, the Leaders' Report.
Chairman, thank you. Good morning everybody. I hope you like the new time. I bought it in honour of the opposition. I paid for it. Just like to confirm, I paid for it myself. People do offer to buy me clothes occasionally. Largely my family because they think I should be dressed better, but then I find that they want me to pay for it, so I still choose my own frompy wardrobe. Leader, colleagues, at our last meeting, we said goodbye to Graham Allen and so we therefore need to welcome his successor and I'm delighted that it's Jess. So welcome Jess, welcome to the hot seat in front of Liz and Russell, but I hope you enjoy your time with council meetings and good luck in the new role. You'll have noticed a couple of weeks ago, we made some changes to Cabinet, so just to confirm those as well. Welcome Russell to Cabinet as the new executive member for health and wellbeing. His responsibilities will include public health and the county council's relationship with the VCSE sector and NHS. Russell will provide support to Liz as the executive member for adult social care and public health. Her responsibilities now include young adults and director at grants. And Jan becomes, is already deputy leader but is appointed as deputy executive member for Hampshire 2050 and corporate services. Her main area of focus over the next few months will be the Hampshire 2050 portfolio with a particular focus on finance and devolution. I'm glad to, I'm grateful to Jan for taking on that role to just create a bit more capacity because both of those issues, as I'm sure you're aware, are taking up quite a bit of time. Moving on to honorary alderman. Colleagues will be aware that the honours, the new honours committee will be meeting soon, it'll be meeting on Monday. And beyond that, I'd like to confirm that a special meeting will take place immediately before the full council on the 28th of November to consider recommendations concerning honorary alderman. Essentially where we want to get to is the point that there are a number of people who have been considered over the years. What we'd like to do is to make sure that we have considered all of those remaining applications and then the honorary alderman position should be considered, I hope, at a meeting after each election as people leave the council. And of course, we could still always have a meeting in between times if somebody left who was deserving of the role in between elections, but it should hopefully mean that it's a topic that we deal with once every four years and resolve in that way. So a quick update on the debate not hate motion that we passed in May. It was resolved that the leader of the council writes to the minister for local government and asks for changes to legislation so that the home addresses of councillors are not published by default. I confirmed that I wrote to the minister and received a positive response last month. The minister wrote that when parliamentary time allows, that's the key point I suspect, the government intends to clarify in law that a relevant member's home address should not be included in published versions of the register of interests and that no other list or material published by a local authority should include a member's home address unless the member requests that this information is published. I'm pleased the government plans to take all legislation to protect the home addresses of councillors and like to thank the minister for his positive comment on this important matter. In terms of future services, we've been through September, a long series of meetings and thank you to all of you, both the chairs and vice-chairs and all of the members of the select committees who took an active part in the process. You've provided meticulous scrutiny throughout reviewing the savings proposals and the public responses to the future services consultation that we held earlier this year. I'd like to emphasise that the savings proposals in the 13 service areas are still recommendations at this stage. On the 14th of October, the county council's cabinet will carefully consider them alongside the consultation responses, feedback from select committees and any deputations as we come to a collective final decision. So the autumn is a pivotal point for the county council. As you'll have noticed, our anticipation of the financial pressure we face is expected to grow from £132 million to at least £175 million at the end of 2025/26 financial year. That assumes that there's no further grant funding announced by central government for adult social care this autumn and of course, we await the 30th of October and the budget at that point, which I think will provide us with much greater clarity as to the options that we have and the different opportunities or challenges that we'll face in dealing with the budget pressures that we have. Devolution. In July, the deputy prime minister invited upper tier councils without a devolution deal to express interest in speaking to the government about the benefits that devolved decision-making powers and funding might bring to their communities. I'm delighted to confirm that Hampshire County Council submitted an expression of interest alongside Southampton City Council, Portsmouth City Council and the Isle of Wight Council on the 30th of August. This means that we've collectively, that we've agreed collectively to take our conversations forward, collate the questions we have of government and ensure that all parts of the area are consulted as these conversations take place. It is imperative that any devolution deal offers us assistance in helping the most deprived areas of both the major cities, the Isle of Wight and the areas of deprivation situated in our own towns and countryside. I'd just like to add a personal thank you to councillor Steve Pitt, who's the Lib Dem leader of Portsmouth, councillor Lorna Fieldker, who's the Labour leader of Southampton and councillor Phil Jordan, who's the independent leader on the Isle of Wight. We have had really good conversations. We have been supportive of one another. They have proceeded with patience and with good humour throughout and we are slowly making our way towards a situation where I think we will be able to get to an agreement. This is not a sprint, it is going to be a marathon, but I am sure that with their determination and their flexibility, as indeed I hope I'm showing on our part, that we will get to something that will be of benefit to us all. So children's services, a quick note of congratulation to children's services who have been rated outstanding. So I'd like to congratulate Hampshire Children's Services and the local authority on achieving another outstanding rating from Ofsted in July, our second consecutive outstanding rating since 2019. More than 10,000 children, young people and their families receive children's social care services in Hampshire. I was immensely proud to read Ofsted's report, which is consistently positive and concludes that children in Hampshire continue to benefit from strong and effective services that make a positive difference to their lives. The report findings are a real testament to the skill and dedication of all of our staff working across children's services and the local authority, from the senior leadership team led by Stuart, Ashley and Steph Howe, to our brilliant frontline social care workers and support staff. The work we do every day for children in Hampshire quite simply wouldn't be possible without the support and collaboration of everyone across the council. As Ofsted inspectors have said themselves, there is a substantial investment and commitment across the council to children's services and corporate leaders have worked exceptionally well together to make a positive difference to children's lives. My heartfelt thanks to everyone in the council for your outstanding support. On the 9th of September, we took part in the launch event of the Hampshire 2050 partnership's Year of Health and Wellbeing. I and other attendees were privileged to be joined by an outstanding line-up of guest speakers, including England's Deputy Medical Officer, Dr Janelle De Gruschi, who gave the keynote presentation. The Year of Health and Wellbeing is a call to action for the 43 organisations who make up Hampshire 2050 partnership to work individually and collectively on activities that will help secure long-term improvements to the health and wellbeing of Hampshire's population. These activities will focus on three themes: physical activity, mental wellbeing and childhood obesity. As a cross-sector partnership, we are keen to demonstrate that the task of improving health and wellbeing is everyone's business. It cannot just fall to health and social care organisations alone. Good health and wellbeing is a key enabler for many other outcomes, including helping people to live longer, improving quality of life, reducing avoidable costs in our health and care systems and supporting a productive workforce and thriving economy. Hampshire County Council will play our full part as a partner and coordinator of the Hampshire 2050 partnership. This is a good opportunity for me to thank officers across the council in the Hampshire 2050 and public health teams who have been working closely together to plan Hampshire's landmark Year of Health and Wellbeing and organise the excellent launch event that took place last month. And if you get a chance to take a look at it, I think some of the presentations are still on the Hampshire 2050 website. The information that Dr De Gruschi put forward was really interesting and really outstanding and fed back into that issue around devolution as to why deprivation must be the thing that leads us on it, because it gave us some stark messages about the impact of that on the health and wellbeing of our residents. The county council welcomed the opportunity to respond to the consultation on the government's proposed reforms to the national planning policy framework and other changes to the planning system which closed on the 24th of September. The government's proposals include raising the bar on housing delivery against nationally mandated targets, which would see a 71% increase in the number of houses to be planned for annually across Hampshire. The county council responded in support of driving forward with growth but warned against a standard methodology which fails to recognise local conditions and evidenced constraints such as environmental designations and most of all, the national parks. These make the increased housing numbers for Hampshire seem excessive and undeliverable. We also expressed support for the reinstatement of strategic planning to unlock a sustainable level of growth in Hampshire. I'd like to thank the spatial planning team for coordinating and drafting the county council's response to this important opportunity to shape the future of the planning system and also to the planning teams in each of the districts and boroughs who have created their own responses and also shared them with us so that the county council... own responses and also shared them with us so that the County Council could reflect what each of the districts and boroughs, all 11 of them, were saying in their responses to. The team worked closely with national networks such as the County Council's network and, as I said, with the Hampshire's districts and boroughs to ensure their views were supported by the County Council's response. Thanks to the district leaders for facilitating this engagement. And I have to say, the thing that we have been very clear to emphasise is that whilst we are supportive of driving, of the proposals driving growth, there needs to be some form of transition to the numbers because not to do so leaves, leaves all of us open to speculative applications as a consequence of districts and boroughs not being able to meet their five-year housing land supply. And if that happens, then developments are proposed and are decided at appeal and the chances of us, of us receiving sufficient developer funding to support the infrastructure that we must deliver alongside it is extremely limited. And that's a vital part for the government, I think, to hear. So nearly there. Just to confirm the different meetings and visits that we have had, thanks to councillor Northville North for convening the first meeting of the Joint Leaders Board, which sits under the Prosperity Partnership. We had a really positive meeting and then transferred into a Hampshire and Isle of Wight Leaders Board as well, or Leaders Meeting as well with the Unitary Authorities in the room too. And it's become, I think, already a really great forum in which we can all talk together and discuss the various interests and issues that affect both the County Council and the districts and boroughs. The Prosperity Partnership Board has met again, again with a really positive meeting. Cabinet has visited the Southampton University and had a great day there and came away with lots of opportunities and ideas about how we can work better with the universities to improve the services that we offer, particularly for universal services, but also work with them to develop and investigate opportunities across the council. Jan and I visited Soddo University, I got to drive a crane, she got to drive a tug around Portsmouth Harbour in their virtual marine environments. I managed to drop a container, she managed not to hit anything, so we, take from that what you will. We've also been to a meeting of the Southampton Port Consultative Committee where it was really good to hear of the investment that ABB Ports are putting into the area and their plans for the water side. And I've also been to visit University Hospital Southampton, declaration of interest in order to talk to them about better ways in which we can work with them to deal with the pressures they face with discharging patients into the community, but also the pressures that we face with managing that flow of people better. And finally, it was a delight on Sunday to attend Grayshot where a memorial to the late Queen was unveiled by the Lord Lieutenant and to stand in for councillor Colonel Ford, who couldn't make it in her division. Mr Chairman, that's my report. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much, Leader. Moving on to item seven, questions, understanding order 1611. We have 30 minutes in total for questions. If we don't reach all the questions, written answers will be provided by the appropriate departments to the councillor who asked the questions that haven't, we haven't managed to get to. I just remind those councillors that have presented questions to make them as succinct as possible, some of them are quite long today, and rather than read them all out, it's perfectly in order for you to simply say, question so-and-so on the order paper. You don't need to actually read it all out if you don't want to. I'm not stopping you from doing so, but that's just to ensure that we have the best opportunity of getting through all the questions. So the first question is from councillor David Harrison.
To get through in time, but that means people who are watching the broadcast online won't know what the question was, so I think we do need people to read the questions out.
As your councillor, as your fellow councillor, councillor Porter asks very succinct questions, I'm really just encouraging everybody else to do the same. Okay, councillor Harrison.
Thank you, Chairman. Sometimes it takes longer to draft a short question than it does, does a longer one, but there we are, that's, that's my problem. I am very concerned about an issue of pavement parking in Totten. People, including parents with buggies and vulnerable adults using mobility scooters, are amongst those who are forced into walking towards oncoming traffic in the road because local businesses constantly use the pavement inter Jackie Wood Gardens to park cars and vans, completely obstructing it. I have tried asking the highways team to empower wardens to prevent pavement parking via a traffic regulation order, but have been told that it might be six months before they can start the process and another two years after that before it can be implemented and enforced. Bearing in mind the public safety aspects of this, can we do better?
Councillor Baumann, if you'd like to reply to that question.
Thank you, and thank you councillor Harrison for your question this morning. Pavement parking is a longstanding national issue that generates consistently high volumes of complaints from all areas of the county and I'm sure most of us here have experience of this happening in our divisions. Whilst the majority of English highway authorities, including Hampshire County Council, have civil parking enforcement powers, the legislation that underpins this function does not enable local authorities to enforce against parking on the footway despite the many problems this causes. The Department for Transport have previously undertaken a national public consultation as part of looking at options to ban pavement parking and a number of national groups, including patrol and the British Parking Association, have been lobbying central government to take action. It's therefore hoped that the new government will progress these changes in the near future that would bring the rest of the country in line with London where pavement parking has been prohibitive since 1974. A national pavement parking ban has also recently been implemented in Scotland. Thank you.
Harrison, have you got a supplementary?
I have, Chairman. I think that, I think Chairman, that the, the problem here is that we probably don't have sufficient staff that would normally process the traffic regulation orders. And when I'm told that it will be two and a half years in order to effect one, that tells me we really should ourselves be looking to resolve the problem rather than this kind of vague hope that the Labour government will come in and do something by way of legislation. This has always been an issue that Hampshire County Council should be wrestling with and I hope that the executive member agrees with me that we should look to ourselves to solve the problem.
Thank you councillor Harrison. I'm very happy to meet with officers and discuss this further with them and see if there's anything we can do to, to speed up the process, but yes, don't hold your hope out, but I'll, I'll work on it. Thank you.
Question two, councillor Dowden.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I've, I stood up because I know my colleague is, has more difficulty than me at the moment. The, my question is, please, could the executive member for adult social care inform the council what percentage of service users have an up-to-date care plan review and how are we meeting the responsibilities of providing them? Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Fairhurst, if you'd like to respond.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you councillor Dowden. Our current care plan review performance is at an average of 53.3 for clients with a long-term service who have had a review, assessment or support plan review within the last 12 months. Reviews should be provided annually. Now, performance has suffered due to increases in demand and this figure does need to improve. Annual reviews are regularly monitored with a power-by dashboard in place to support real-time oversight. Robust triage and prioritisation of cases as well as a programme of improvements are now in place. If a person's circumstances change, they are advised to contact the Directorate and a review or a reassessment is provided. Teams ensure that those people waiting are not at risk of deterioration and ensure those assessed as being in the greatest of need are prioritised for support. The Directorate works carefully to balance both the demand of annual care and support plans, reviews against new referrals, hospital discharge pressures and urgent safeguarding work. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fairhurst. Councillor Dowden, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I obviously thank the, and appreciate the response that I've just received, but the, all I would ask that this council accepts the view of the experts in adult social care that state that if we don't get as close to 100% in these reviews, we are wasting not only money, county councils' money, in supporting people who have to go then into rest homes or nursing homes, which is far more expensive. So that's why I asked the question and although we're at 53%, it needs to go up a lot more. Thank you.
Councillor Fairhurst.
Thank you councillor Dowden for your comments. I totally agree, it is not good enough, we are working on an improvement, we have seen improvements in the last two to three months, but we carry on until we get to that magic figure of 100%.
If we move on to question three, councillor Mamal Neney.
Thank you, Chair. Almost a year ago, in October 2023, Hampshire County Council Cabinet designated authority to senior offices to proceed with the land purchase in North Many Down in Bezingstoke, which is in my division. Given the time that has processed, could you provide an update on the current status of this deal and when we can expect to see civil works begin on the site? Thank you.
And I understand the Leader's responding to this particular longstanding issue. It's, it certainly is, Chairman, and councillor Mamal Neney, thank you for your question. I think, I think it's fair to say before I give you the answer that this is probably the most complex deal I've ever seen in many years in business as well. So you'll appreciate that a complex land transaction with multiple stakeholders has taken time to negotiate and conclude properly alongside associated financial and legal due diligence. As I hope you'll appreciate, it would not be appropriate for me to update on a commercially confidential negotiation in a public forum such as this. Once a land transaction has been completed, infrastructure works will commence in accordance with the delivery plan overseen by the development vehicle, which is led by our development partner, Urban and Civic, and working to the outline planning permission already granted by Bezingstoke and Dean Borough Council as local, local planning authority for the Many Down North site. The first stage of this work will be the completion of site construction access junctions in accordance with reserved matter approvals already granted by the local planning authority. The construction of the two main points of access to support the initial phases of development will then follow. I think it's fair to say though that we are almost there, it has been a very long journey and I have to say thank you just at this point to two people. One is Gary, who has been outstanding in sticking with this and understanding it, and the other is to our colleague councillor Latham Peter, who very kindly sat down with me when, since I became Leader, to go through the entire history of this, which goes back years and is enormously complex. The important thing to say is that we are almost there.
Councillor Mamal Neney, have you got a supplementary?
Yes, Chair, thank you. So, Leader, thank you very much for your answer. So what about this Many Down South? When do we see the light at the end of the tunnel?
So councillors will be aware that Many Down South is the other part of the site. We've got a longstanding agreement with Bezingstoke and Dean Borough Council over the, the options on that site as well. I think it's fair to say that in terms of, going back to that issue of the NPPF and the housing pressures that we have, that means that the importance of Many Down South for Bezingstoke and Dean becomes more prominent in terms of providing, providing the additional housing that they need. I, I think what I would reassure you is that I think we are all agreed that we don't want to create a deal as complex as the one that we had for Many Down North again. And so as Many Down South is being promoted as part of the Bezingstoke and Dean local plan, I am hopeful that it will come forward, but it will come forward in a much more straightforward way than Many Down North has done in due course as the next few, few months and years progress with their local plan.
Moving on to question four, councillor Wallace.
Thank you. Over the past months, the council has been working on a future services consultation to reduce and change some local services to help the County Council deliver savings to address the council's 132 million pound recurring budget gap. This has culminated in a series of select committee meetings over the past month to review recommendations on service cuts to deliver a total of 17 million pounds worth of annual cost savings. Many of the recommendations made in those meetings are cuts to services that no one across the council would choose to make, but we're being forced into because of the council's financial position. So it comes as some alarm that whilst this exercise has been happening, costs elsewhere across the council have grown by a further 43 million pounds. What reassurance can the administration provide to councillors and to our residents that they have control of the council's budget? Thank you.
The Leader.
Me again, Chairman, thanks. Councillor Wallace, thank you for your question. I think the important, there are two important things to just point out in, in terms of the situation in response to your question before I sort of give you a little bit more of a formal answer. The first is that this is not in year, so we are talking about an assessment of where we anticipate we will be at the end of 2025, 26 financial year. And the way that we do that is to look at the pressures that we are facing at the moment. One of the pressures that we have, as we all know, is that we are unable to, in many circumstances, say no or means test the support for which we are obliged, the, the support we are obliged to provide for people. That's entirely right, but it leaves us in a situation where the financial pressure upon us is only limited by the number of people who qualify for the support that we provide them who are coming forward. The other thing to say is that all of the work that we have all done over the last few weeks, looking at the various savings, look at savings that will total in excess of 80 million, not 17. So to be clear, we, when we make the decisions on the 14th of October, we're looking at a much bigger package of reductions in cost to be able to bridge that gap. That doesn't mean however that we shouldn't be in any way complacent and it also means that we still have to look at ourselves to find the remaining gap that we know and we anticipate will be happening and will be, will be affecting us by the end of next year. So what I would like to do is to offer reassurance to this chamber and to our residents that we are fully in control of our financial management, as we have been for many years and are doing all we can to minimise costs and maximise efficiencies, income and savings. and are doing all we can to minimise costs and maximise efficiencies, income and savings. However, we need to be realistic and recognise that the majority of our financial problems are created by increased demand for statutory services in areas such as social care and special educational need, which we do not have control over, and that the pressures we face are no different to that of any upper tier local authority in the country. And I think if you look at the challenges that many of our neighbours face, not just Southampton to the south, but also the Berkshire authorities to the north and other county councils, you will find that the story is similar across everybody, and in fact, in many respects, we are lucky to be in a position where we are not having to make the same kind of decisions that some of our colleagues are elsewhere. So thank you, Mr Chairman.
councillor Wallace, have you a supplementary?
Thank you for the answer, no supplementary, thank you.
Moving on to question five, councillor Groves.
Thank you, chair. Would the executive member for Universal Services please confirm what action she is taking to restore the withdrawn public transport from the west of Chandler's Ford and Valley Park to Peter Simmons College for use by school pupils, along with proposals to improve the remaining forty six bus service, which has now been reduced to just one service a day on that route and therefore cannot be used for a return journey? Thank you.
councillor North.
Thank you very much. Thank you councillor Groves for your question. The four six one service was a commercial service operated by Stagecoach, and they made a commercial decision to cease operating as fair revenue did not cover the operational costs of running that service. Most colleges in Hampshire financially support bus services to enable their students to access college. Peter Simmons, however, have declined to support this service. The county council does not have a statutory duty to provide transport to college students and does not have additional funding available to restore the service. However, I am meeting the Stagecoach managing director next week, and I'm very happy to raise this route and their engagement with Peter Simmons at that meeting. Regarding the forty six, we recognise it's a limited timetable without the four six one in place. Officers are currently engaging with the community and have received lots of feedback and suggestions about what the future of the forty six bus service could look like. As you're aware, the Universal Services Select Committee put forward an alternative recommendation to cabinet in relation to community transport for cabinet to consider, which we will do on the fourteenth of October.
councillor Groves, have you got a supplementary?
Yes, thank you, chair, and thank you very much for that answer councillor North, and that is helpful to understand the situation, obviously not a good situation. Has the executive member or her officers made inquiries with Blue Star to see whether they can supplement the Blue Star one Southampton to Winchester or the Blue Star five Eastley to Romsey service to also serve the west of Chandler's Ford and Valley Park? And this is relevant to your meeting with Stagecoach, can the Stagecoach sixty six bus service from Winchester to Romsey, can it be diverted to serve these areas or supplemented as I understand it used to do in the past? Thank you.
councillor North.
You councillor Groves, I'll make sure we get a response in writing to you on your very specific route questions.
Our final question.
Thank you.
I think that would be an order of fine, yes, is the answer to that. Final question, councillor Porter.
Thank you. How many primary and secondary schools used HC3S in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty four, and now in twenty twenty four? I understand it's now called education catering.
councillor Forster.
Thank you councillor Porter for that succinct question, it's great to get those short ones. The simple answer is, in twenty seventeen it was four hundred and ninety three, and in twenty twenty four it's four hundred.
Have you a supplementary councillor Porter?
Not quite as short. Anyway, but I thank you for your response, and I'm conscious that many schools and parents are considering being, jumping before they're pushed. So will the executive member agree with me that in view of the work and cost this will create for schools and the concern of nutritious meals for their children, for parents, that for transparency, this important change in service should have been included in the compendium of future service proposals, and that results of the schools' consultations will be considered in the decision making?
councillor Forster.
No, I won't agree with you on your opening comment. The issue is one where we've looked at it very extensively, and it is a pressing concern, and what we wanted to make sure of is that there is sufficient time for schools to act if they need to, based on the feedback from the consultation which is ongoing. So we will take that consultation feedback into account, and our officers will then make recommendations which we will make a final decision on, and whatever that will be, it will be in the interests of the schools and the children.
Thank you councillor Forster. We now are on part one matters for decision, agenda item eight, appointments. I asked the leader to introduce this, and I understand there are some additional appointment, verbal appointments.
Thank you, chairman. Appointments proposed to adjust memberships of committees and bodies as set out in the report. In addition, I propose the following appointments, that Reverend Dominic Chemlevsky, I think I've said that correct, I hope I, if I haven't, I apologise to him, be appointed as a full member to Group B within Hampshire Standing Advisory Council for Religious Education, so the SECA committee, that Roz Hartley replaces Matt Nisbet as a full member of the Health and Wellbeing Board, and Claire Wally is appointed as the co-opted substitute member, that councillor Juliet Henderson to be appointed as a full member of the Hampshire twenty fifty Corporate Services and Resources Select Committee, and that councillor Lesley Minahan be appointed as a full member of the Children and Young People Select Committee. I move the recommendations, including those additions. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, leader. Any questions? Any debate? Well, in that case, I would ask you to approve the recommendations on page sixteen of the order paper and the additional ones provided verbally by the leader. Are you all happy? Moving on, item nine, the youth justice plan. And if I could invite the executive lead member for children's services councillor Chad to present the report and then invite questions.
Thank you, chairman. It gives me great privilege today to present this report to full council of the Youth Justice Plan for Hampshire Youth Justice Services twenty four twenty five. This report has gone to the scrutiny committee, which was, there was a fantastic dialogue within that committee and lots of questions asked and continuous conversations moving on from that. I'd like everyone to support the recommendation today that the county council approve the Hampshire Youth Justice Service Youth Justice Plan twenty twenty four as endorsed by the executive lead member for children's services at my decision date on the thirteenth of September. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Chad. Any questions? Any debate? Ah, one question. Councillor Parker-Jones.
Thank you, chair. Obviously, I was at select committee, and yes, it was, it was a good dialogue and we discussed a lot of things. I just wanted to raise a couple of points I think full council might want to just be aware of, and I think is quite worrying within this. So some excellent work's been done by officers to clarify where there's disproportionate representation in certain groups and also highlight specific areas of concern. Several things came out to me, one thing's parents are concerned about their children's mental and emotional wellbeing, the Hampshire Youth Justice Services recognise that speech and language issues are often an issue, and children with SEND or an EHCP are much more likely to offend and re-offend. Yet the plan is a little vague in having any clear action to resolve these issues, and I appreciate that some of these things are beyond the power of Hampshire County Council, but this is particularly on things like the timelines and sources of finance. So can we have some clarity about how these issues or some sort of feedback and how these could be addressed through clear action and funding by whom and when? Thank you.
councillor Chad.
Thank you councillor. Thank you councillor Tastain. Yeah, absolutely, we will continue that dialogue, and just to say, this is a partnership as well with this, with youth justice, and it's very important that we work with our partners on this and that we engage fully with them to provide the best outcome for our children, but absolutely, we will keep that conversation going and we will inform members as well.
councillor Parker-Jones, did you wish to speak?
I'm going to come in under debate, sorry, so, thank you. I wanted to say how I welcomed this report.
Can we just hold, we're just answering the questions, I'll come back to you in a minute. Councillor Porter, did you have a question?
I did, thank you. In the paper, it very clearly states that probation provides cash rather than people. Is this going to change as a result of this Youth Justice Plan statement, or will it remain just as a financial contribution rather than the valuable experience of probation services?
councillor Chad.
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Porter, can we provide a written response for you in regard to that one, and we'll make sure that's shared with the rest of the members as well? Thank you.
Now we move on to the debate. Sorry, councillor Crawford, have you got a question or is it the debate you want to take part in? My apologies, over to you.
Occurred to me this week because we had saw a thirteen year old girl in older shot sentenced to a one year referral order for violent disorder, and looking at this report, it occurred to me there's nothing at the district council level in it, it's all general and high level. How can we get to make sure that the youth justice board is cooperating with the district councils, because they've got a programme in Rushmore of dealing with the youth justice offenders? Thank you.
councillor Chad, if you feel this is a detailed question that's best asked, answered by the director of children's services, I leave it up to you what you'd like to do. Okay.
Thank you, chairman, and thank you councillor Crawford. We wouldn't want to talk about specific cases in regards to, but we do liaise with our districts and boroughs, but what we will do is we will provide a full written response for you in regards to what those, the stages of that engagement is for you as well, and again, we'll share that with all members.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move on to the debate. Councillor Parker-Jones, I think you were just before councillor Porter.
Much, sorry, when you said debate, I hit the button and I was obviously too quick. One, I wanted to say how, well, how much I do welcome this report, and I actually want to praise the work of the Youth Justice Partnership, their results are amazing, they are, the Hampshire results are really good compared to the national picture, so I think it should be celebrated. I, of course, do have concerns about the amount of young people on SEN and their educational health and care plans that are entering our youth justice system, particularly given that the amount of people now receiving EHCP plans has increased by eighty six percent in just, since twenty sixteen. So it's a worrying trend that so many of our young people may come into contact with the youth justice system, and I really, really hope that they receive their SEN quality mark which they're striving for. It's not perfect, but I think there's a lot to be celebrated, so I really welcome this plan. Thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
councillor Porter, did you wish to speak?
Please, it's coming up, it's flashing and I couldn't switch it off, anyway. Thank you very much, I too welcome the report, I'm pleased that many young people are diverted from potentially becoming criminals in their own right in adulthood, but in my experience, I am still concerned that young people are cleared from the system too early and therefore may be at risk as young adults. I also think that many of the actions described in this paper are diversionary activities that take young people away from the thoughts of getting involved in crime. I actually really think that this is a failure of the county council and the partnership to consider youth services as a really practical way of working as trusted adults with these young people as another part of this partnership, and I really regret that it's not there in that partnership. But I do welcome the report, and I am pleased, very pleased, that the county council continues to play a very active part in it.
Thank you councillor Porter. Councillor Heron.
Chairman, thank you, and I want to start by welcoming the plan, congratulating perhaps the Youth Justice Service, you know, throughout this, we perform above the benchmarks, and I don't want to take anything away from that, but I can't resist this opportunity to reflect back on my time as lead member of children's services and perhaps the one thing that sticks in my mind is the greatest failure of that, and that is, when I saw young people that we were supporting or working with enter the criminal justice system because of systematic failures. To see young people heading down that route because of a system around children's services was quite distressing, and I must say, to point the finger of where that is, there were two reasons, and can I clearly say neither of those were related to this council's performance or the excellent work that our officers did. One, to be honest, was around the state of children and adolescent mental health service provision within the county, and I'm afraid, I must say, and I won't mince my words now, it is failing young people, and has been failing young people for too long. And the other one, I'm afraid, is a wider one, and that is, when young people are caught with what is considered either an undiagnosable condition or an untreatable mental health condition, because I'm afraid at that point the health services kind of wash their hands with young people. And the only people who are left holding it are this council, doing the best that we can, and I cannot praise enough the work that our officers do in what are completely unacceptable circumstances, dealing with young people who we are trying to support, whether it's in foster care, increasingly in our secure accommodation, who should not be in a care setting, they should be in a treatment setting. But unfortunately, those children often, despite our best efforts, enter the criminal justice system, and those two outcomes are unacceptable in this time. There is a message there for government, there is a certain message there for those providers that charge adolescent mental health services. So chairman, while I welcome this, I think it is an opportunity I couldn't let go past of where the system is failing young people. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Heron. Are there any other people who'd like to take part in this debate? Otherwise, I'd ask councillor Chad to summarise, wind up the debate.
Thank you, chairman, and thank you for everyone's comments today. I think being a young person today is really challenging with everything that is available to them as individuals and how to navigate life in what actually sometimes us adults find very difficult in navigating life in a world that we live in right now. So noting everyone's comments today and making sure that we really do continue to work with our partners going forward, that we really that we really work with our schools to improve attendance in, for our young people across the county. So they've got that safe place where they can go to and really excel as well. So today, I would like to again move the recommendation on page seventeen, which reads that the county council approved the youth justice system, youth justice plan twenty twenty four as endorsed by myself for the executive lead member for children's services at my decision day on the thirteenth of September twenty twenty four. Thank you.
Are you all happy with the recommendation? Thank you. Let's move on to item ten, which is notice of motion. And I'd like to invite councillor Keno Ford as the proposer of the motion to move the motion.
Thank you, chair. With this opportunity to bring this motion to council, I should say I'm advised by Mr... Ready? I've got, I've got form on this one. I managed to break the system in universal services scrutiny last week. Thank you for letting me bring this motion to council. I am advised that I should declare a personal interest in this motion. My mum is ninety three next Monday. The Labour government has recently made the decision to restrict the winter fuel payment to only pensioners in receipt of pension credit or other means tested benefits.
councillor Keno, do you want to make your speech now or later? Or, because I'd like to know whether we have a second for the motion first.
I apologize.
Have we got a second for the motion? councillor Menon, are you happy to speak after the proposer or later in the debate? Fine, okay, thank you. councillor Keno Ford, if you'd like to now open the debate.
Apologies, I thought you'd already done that, chair. Okay, I'll start again. The Labour government has recently made the decision to restrict the winter fuel payment to only pensioners in receipt of pension credit or other means tested benefits. According to Age UK, the estimated impact of this decision will mean two million pensioners who badly need the money to stay warm this winter will not receive it. Winter fuel payments play a significant role in helping older residents of Hampshire and across the UK afford heating during the coldest months, thereby preventing the heat or eat dilemmas and safeguarding health. Criticism from Age UK, the countryside alliance and other charities highlights the social injustice and potential health risks posed by this sudden policy change. This decision will place additional strain on vulnerable pensioners, many of whom do not claim pension credit despite being eligible, further exacerbating their financial hardship. It is recognized that the winter fuel payment has been a lifeline for many older people across the UK and that restricting its availability solely to those on pension credit risks leaving many pensioners in financial hardship. While some pensioners currently in receipt of the winter fuel payment may not require it, many thousands across Hampshire sit just above the cutoff for pension credit and now will lose their allowance. The decision to means test winter fuel payments, especially with such short notice and without adequate compensatory measures, is deeply unfair and will disproportionately affect the health and wellbeing of our poorest older residents. The government's approach fails to consider the administrative barriers and stigma that prevent eligible pensioners from claiming pension credit, leaving many without the support they desperately need. This council resolves two. One, bring forward a council led local awareness campaign to alert those eligible of pension credit, which in some aspects will help access to the winter fuel payment for those most in need. Secondly, request that the council leader write to the chancellor of the Exchequer, urging a review of the decision to means test the winter fuel payment and asking the government to ensure that vulnerable pensioners, particularly those who do not claim pension credit, are protected from fuel poverty. Also, commit the council to signing the Save the Winter Fuel Payment for Struggling Pensioners petition being run by Age UK and to encourage all members to sign the petition themselves. Also, encourage local efforts to promote pension credit uptake through council services and partnerships with local charities and community organizations to ensure that all eligible pensioners in Hampshire are supported in claiming their entitlement. Lastly, make the commitment that all Hampshire County Council libraries are designated under the warm spaces scheme for the winter of twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Keno Ford. councillor Menon.
Thank you, chair. The Labour government's decision to scrap the winter fuel allowance is callous, poorly thought out and morally reprehensible. Over two million pensioners will be pushed over the cliff edge into fuel poverty as a result of this decision. For those that may be under the illusion that pensioners and poverty are not bedfellows, in my hometown, we have a food bank which one day a week is for pensioners only. We should sit with that, a food bank for pensioners. The Labour government acknowledges their decision and ultimately their responsibility will determine the premature deaths of thousands of... Sorry, I'll start that one again. The Labour government acknowledges their decision to cut the winter fuel allowance will cause a premature deaths of thousands of pensioners, therefore depriving them and their loved ones of precious, precious lives. I would ask all members to put aside any political allegiance and recognize this isn't a difficult decision, but rather it's the morally right decision. Thank you, chair.
Are there any amendments to the motion? councillor Porter.
Thank you, I have an amendment which I'd like to place.
Have you got a second?
I have, councillor David Harrison.
Thank you.
I've actually placed it with Member Services, so it should be able to be distributed manually now. But it is acknowledging that the cost of keeping warm does not just affect pensioners. Hampshire County Council will also write to the chancellor of the Exchequer urging a further extension to the household support fund, which is currently extended for another period only, to support all households who cannot afford to heat their homes.
Do you wish to speak to the amendment, councillor Porter?
I think it will be incorporated in many of the comments that are following. But the household support fund has a considerable value to the county council and thus to the members of the public to whom it passes out that money. I understand it's in the region of about fourteen million pounds a year. So that figure, that amount of money is extremely important to our, all of our families who are struggling to heat and eat. This particular figure, and this is an opportunity, as we're writing to the chancellor of the Exchequer about the whole winter fuel allowance, to also look at the value of the household support fund. It does seem to be that they are tied together. It's about actually making sure that all of our residents can actually be supported through the difficult times, particularly as the heating costs have just risen again only recently. I think that's probably enough said. I just realized that I also have to declare a personal interest. I received the winter fuel allowance, that shows how ridiculous the system is.
Have you all received a copy of the proposed amendment? So we start by debating... Oh, sorry, yes, councillor Harrison, do you want to speak now or reserve your right to speak later?
Chairman, I'll speak now if I may. Forgive me for not standing, I'm a pensioner with sciatica that comes and goes and it benefits no one at all, if that, if that should be a problem for me. Chairman, I invite members to support this amendment. I think we probably all recognize, don't we, that fuel poverty is not an issue that is exclusively something that affects pensioners. Very nice to see the new caring face of the Conservative Party with the original motion. But I think it's always good when this chamber reaches consensus. And I think we can probably reach consensus by accepting the Liberal Democrat motion on this occasion. It's an opportunity, amendment to the emotion. I'm so grateful to members for putting me straight as always. So chairman, I think probably I've said enough, members will agree with that one. And please accept the amendment.
councillors, are there any other amendments? councillor Crawford.
Thank you, chairman. I have to say I have every sympathy with the Liberal Democrat amendment. Unfortunately, I feel it's been overtaken by events, which is what I'm seeking to incorporate in my amendment. So my amendment arises from the fact that the secretary of state for work and pensions has actually directed county councils that they should prioritize their additional household support fund for the next six months towards vulnerable pensioners, particularly those who do not claim pension credit, so that they are protected from fuel poverty. So that's that part of the amendment. So in that sense, they may wish to withdraw their amendment at this stage so that we can get on to debate my amendment. But that's what all I had to say, I hope I have the opportunity to introduce my amendment later, if I may.
Have you got a second councillor Crawford? councillor Taylor? Would you like to speak to your amendment? Because I understand the other one will stand as well.
Yes, thank you.
The amendment really is to do with having this council take practical action rather than simply writing to the government and encouraging others to do things. So my amendment, this amendment proposes, where it refers to the actions that this county council should take under the original motion, I'm proposing to remove the first four of those and simply leave the fifth one, which is the reference to libraries providing warm spaces. And the reason for that is, which I'll introduce now, and my amendment says to welcome, that the county council should instead welcome the decision of the work and pensions secretary to allocate seven point one million pounds in household support fund to Hampshire so the council can ensure that vulnerable pensioners, particularly those who do not claim pension credit, are protected from fuel poverty. The other part of the amendment is to go on and say that the council, this council should make arrangements to contact through council services and partnerships with local charities and community organizers all pension household, age households, who are eligible for but not claiming pension credit in Hampshire to ensure that they can claim it. So this is practical action that this council can take in two respects. And therefore, that's the reason for proposing that. I have to say that I was aware that the means testing of the winter fuel allowance was coming well before the election, because it was part of the Labour Party policy that they should have this mean testing. I spoke to the then shadow minister about it and she said, I know, I don't like it. Nobody likes it, but we've got to do this because there is the twenty two billion pound black hole. This, this black hole has to be filled and it may be, on the other hand, she said, I will be doing everything in my power to make sure that those elderly people who really need their fuel poverty address will have the provision made by this government. And that's why she's extended the household support fund, which the previous government had not done, although they knew that this kind of poverty was going forward. So those are the two things. Since then, I've spoken to our local MP, the remarkable Alex Baker, and she voted, she voted for the removal of means testing for winter fuel allowance. But she again was concerned about it and she wished to impress on the government for these actions.
councillor Crawford, can you finish your remarks? Thank you.
Thank you.
councillor Taylor? Do you wish to speak now or reserve?
Thank you, chair. I do actually respect the very good intentions of the proposer and second of the original motion, but I do actually have some concerns about the efficacy of what is proposed. Winter fuel allowance should support people who need help with their heating in the winter. But it is received by very many who do not need that help. And it is very difficult to imagine that people like Sir Paul McCartney, Rod Stewart or even Stanley Johnson will be laying awake worrying what to do without their winter fuel allowance. That public money is sometimes given to those who do not need it when a lack of public funds means that we ourselves are considering withdrawing support from our homeless is quite frankly grotesque. So I support the government's plan for a winter fuel allowance to stop being a universal benefit. And I therefore don't feel that we should be writing to the government to say that they should not do that. However, I do completely understand the concerns and worries of those who have not yet reclaimed pension credit or fall just outside the eligibility limits. According to Policy and Practice Organisation, there are about one thousand and fourteen Hampshire households not claiming the pension credit they're entitled to. And we need to do a lot more than just sign some petitions or put up posters or hand out leaflets. We need to be really focused and targeted in policy and in our actions. And as councillor Crawford has said, we have been allocated seven point one million pounds of household support funding. And we have a lot of flexibility about how we use that money. And we could decide to use it to target pensioners who fall outside pension credit eligibility. Our current energy related household support fund offer is very focused on giving advice. And that is usually in respect to pensioners on how to apply for pension credit or grants that require you to be in receipt of pension credit first. It doesn't hit those people that are just falling outside that eligibility. So I think that we can help many more by better targeting the fund to pensioners on low income who fall outside the eligibility. I also think that we should follow the example of Kent County Council. By working with Policy and Practice and their local councils, they created a living standards index to target specific households for pension credit take up. And this was incredibly successful and we could learn from that and do the same. This could amount to, their estimates are, an extra one point three million pounds of income coming into those people. And that's really excellent for them and it's also good for our Hampshire economy. Now, I've been out and about talking to people about pension credit and I've met many people who have not claimed because they didn't want to be a burden or seem to be a scrounger. And to them and other people, I would like to say to them, please claim. I and everybody else here have paid our taxes just for that reason and it's an entitlement, not a handout. And I hope everybody will respond to people who say that they're concerned about being a burden in that way. So in conclusion, I'm reluctant to support a motion that suggests that we should keep giving winter fuel allowance to people who don't need it or fail to properly target the help that we can give people using all the means at our disposal. Which is why I feel that this amendment provides a much more targeted approach to what we could do. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Taylor. We're now open for debate of the two. And then at the end of the debate, we will take a vote on, first of all, the amendment proposed by councillor... a vote on, first of all, the amendment proposed by councillor Crawford, and then the amendment proposed by councillor Porter, and then we will take the overall vote, depending upon the result of those two votes, on the motion itself. And to start the debate, I'd like to call upon councillor Kendall, who had his hand up earlier.
Thank you, Chairman, and it's a relief to be able to stand, I can tell you. Sitting in these chairs. So according to the Chancellor's own calculations, and it's now apparent from what the leader of the Labour Group said, they were aware of the so-called black hole before the election rather than after. But according to those calculations, bearing in mind that the nurses have just accepted a 5.5% increase, and well deserved, that is, had she increased the public service wage by 5.5% and not 6%, the simple arithmetic shows that would have been no need to fiddle around with the pension allowance at all. So the accusations being bandied around that she chose to do that somewhat cynically in order to make sure that her friends in the trade unions were happy seems to have some credence, frankly. Now, I must declare, of course, that I regrettably have reached the age where I do get a winter fuel allowance along with others probably in this room. And I confess that I don't particularly need it. But I say to you that all the wealthy people who don't particularly need it are putting a lot more than 300 pounds a year into their local community charities. And I'm pretty sure that is the case for almost everyone in this room as well. So it isn't a question of needing it and wasting it at all. What I would have thought would have been more logical for the government to do, which they could still do, is to remove the winter fuel allowance from high rate taxpayers, but leave the winter fuel allowance in place for basic rate taxpayers. That is a simple way to do it, through the PAYE system, and it doesn't therefore affect the situation of those who are just above or just below a particular area of calculation as to whether they should get it or not. And it stops this nonsense of, well, I've got to go and fill in forms to get a particular allowance whose name I've even forgotten by now, and other sort of allowances which are dictated by a government official in order to see whether you can or can't get it. And that is what affects most people who say that they don't particularly want to apply for it. So while I in general support the Labour amendment, and I do think that councillor Taylor's speech actually was a particularly good speech, and well worth listening to, I do think that there's a very simple way out of this for the government, and I hope that they take it and remove it from high rate taxpayers like myself and others, but leave it for basic rate taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kendall. councillor Price.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. All I want to do is, I would have thought it was a pecuniary interest one should be declaring if one has received it in the past. But the monitoring officer has said, no, it isn't, it should be personal. But as I have received it in the past, I want to declare a personal interest. And I imagine there are many others who should be doing the same.
councillor Brandt.
Thank you, Chairman. I was going to say exactly the same as councillor Price, actually. I think that I think it might be better to take a vote on those that don't receive it.
councillor Howe. Oh, they, sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. I must say, I don't receive it because I'm not pension age. But what I do want to say is, in my division, I represent lots of elderly people who do receive the pension and pension fuel allowance. I'm speaking to lots of them. Although they have, many of them own their own properties, and it would appear that they don't need it, they certainly do, because heating older properties is more expensive. So they have to then think about, should they heat or should they eat? I was talking to Dori and Jack, who are very, very, actually very concerned about this, and they do, really do need the money. They need the fuel allowance. So I would very much support the original motion. Thank you.
councillor Henderson.
I feel uncomfortable that I haven't declared my personal interest in this, and I think probably others around the chamber who want to declare it do as well. I thought you were going to ask us at the beginning of the debate, those who wanted to declare such an interest, as our household does receive the allowance. Sadly, I'm not as young as councillor Head.
councillor Collet, what I thought I'd said, perhaps I didn't, is for people to declare the personal interest when they speak. But having said that, I'm very happy to avoid that happening now for everybody who has an interest to declare in this particular matter, a personal interest, to do so now. If you keep your hands up just for a minute, Joe will... Can we do that? We're just checking if we can use the electronic system. So if you put your hands down just for a minute, we'll see what we can do. Right, it's going to be set up so that when it comes up on the screen, you can simply press the appropriate button. So councillors, we'll adjourn the meeting for a couple of minutes, just so that it gets set up, and then we'll all vote, not vote, declare the interest.
If you do have one, the answer is yes. Okay? It's four if you have a personal interest. Has everyone pressed their button? Okay, I think that's it. If there is anyone that hasn't come back in the chamber, they will obviously have to declare their interest when they speak. So let's move on, if we can move on, to the list of speakers. councillor Wade, if you can speak.
Thank you, Chairman.
Carry on with the debate.
Judging by that vote, there's half the people in this room probably don't need the winter fuel allowance. I'm going to support the Liberal Democrat amendment, because if you look at the facts, there are in 2023, 14.4% of all households are in fuel poverty. There are 4.3 million children in poverty. These are statistics. And whilst I totally accept the need for the pensioners to keep their winter fuel allowance, I get that, although some of us probably don't need it, there are very many that do, and the criteria is such that I support the spirit of the original part of amendment. The reason I particularly support this amendment by Jackie Porter is that we're responsible for all the people of Hampshire, regardless of their age. And there are areas in my, in my division, in my district, I'm sure in other districts here there are, of real deprivation, and there are families who are going to think food or fuel. Parents are going to look at their children, food or fuel. We need to protect all of the families, regardless of age. We need to really try and persuade this government to do what it should do, and that's work for all of the people. And therefore, I support the Liberal Democrat amendment, and I encourage all members, cross party, to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wade. councillor Reed.
Right, thank you, Chairman. This is a debate which it would be very easy to fall into the trap of making it partisan and a little bit gung ho and not really serving our people very well. And I hope we avoid doing that in the speeches to come. This is a very complex issue, and unfortunately, the Chancellor has made a decision based not on the complexity, but on two simple factors. The first factor is, is a person old enough to be in receipt of a pension? And the second is, is their income low enough to be in receipt of pension credit? So income and age, and that's how that decision has been made. But there are many other issues that are going to affect whether this is the right thing for individuals. Medical issues. There are afflictions of old age that affect people, that make it imperative that they heat their homes and heat their homes more. There was an article on the radio this morning from the, to somebody talking about Parkinson's, and the need for somebody who is not as mobile as they were to be able to heat their home, and the expenses of doing that. There's the condition of the property. A property that is difficult to heat costs more to heat than a property that is not difficult to heat. I mean, it's a self-evident truth. But people live in properties with different values. Those are measured, the information is available, but they have to face that difficulty. Access to banking. A great many people, probably a lot of people in this room, with access to banking are able to take out a direct debit and overpay in the summer so that they can underpay in the winter, and it smoothes out. That is a factor that I think is important. Have pensioners actually applied for all the allowances that they are entitled to? There's probably more, but I think I make the point by mentioning those, that this is a much more complex issue than simply age and income. It is such a complex issue that I am drawn to the conclusion that handling it as a universal benefit was the correct approach, and it is a shame that we have departed from that. This motion doesn't challenge the decision that the Chancellor has made, it seeks to find some mitigating factors. And I think the Liberal Democrat amendment seeks to strengthen the mitigating factors that are available to us. The Labour amendment I find more challenging to support, because it actually removes some words which I think are good, some actions that I think it is right that Hampshire County Council takes. So I think I can speak for many people when I say that the universal benefit approach was the right approach on an issue which is intensely complex and where every individual is probably different. Having departed from that on such a simple argument of age and income is an error. We now have to do as much as we can as a county council to mitigate that error, and that is what this motion is asking us to do, and therefore, that's why I support the motion.
Thank you councillor Reed. councillor Porter.
Thank you. Thank you. I was going to speak to the amendment, but I think actually councillor Reed has just said pretty much what I was going to say, so I will leave it to you. Thank you.
councillor, I can't see him, Mamu Lanini. He's gone. Right, let's move a bit further up. The executive lead member, is that councillor? Oh, sorry, councillor House.
No, sorry, yeah, I'm not the executive lead member at the moment.
Yeah, it's all right.
So thank you, thank you, Chairman. I was actually initially rising mainly to say a few words about Jackie Porter in supporting her amendment. Jackie is... Jackie is, most you want to know, is just standing down as our Children's Services Lead after 11 years of supreme service and handing that role over to Prabh Bains, who's not with us this afternoon, morning, just about on the cusp. And I think Jackie's amendment actually demonstrates the solid role she's played in looking at the needs of Hampshire's residents over the course of so many years. What a difference those three months makes. Three months ago, all the apologies for government were coming from here. Yeah? Three months on, the apologies for government are coming from over there. Isn't it the way of things? Well, we welcome the converted because many of us for a long, long time have been saying government hasn't got the benefit system right and given the right support to the people who are most in need. I know the Labour group have now moved in the opposite direction for their reasons of needing to defend Mr Starmer and co. But we welcome the conversion of the Conservative group to supporting benefits and people in need. The last decade or so have been a pretty tough time for people in difficulties. The two-child benefit cap, cuts, the cap on housing benefits, even the need for a household support fund, which didn't exist 15, 20 years ago, the sheer utter demand on food banks that are still a disgrace in a civilised country, are all functions of 14 years of Conservative government. And that, I think, is a disgrace, and it's something which I appreciate that this block of this bit of the chamber won't be prepared to say, but it is a reality. The level of our pensions in this country is still below the level of pensions in Bosnia and Ukraine. We are still doing a disservice to our older residents in the latter part of their life compared to many, many, many civilised nations in Europe and the rest of the world, and that's something which I think we could all campaign on. Now, I think Mal Kendall's line on the tax level, and, has he gone now? Okay, momentarily, sorry. Mal Kendall's line was one I could support, actually. If you taxed the upper benefit level based on the higher tax rate, that would deal with the poverty trap issue. The critical issue here is the poverty trap. It's the poverty trap for those who are just above, plus those who are just below, who still won't be reached by whatever work we do trying to encourage people to claim pension credit, even though it's going to take them three months, four months, six months to actually get it back dated and paid, by which point their level would have been cold through the winter. And that's the real problem with the issues we've got here, and why, on balance, I agree with the point that was made by Stephen Reid, that a universal benefit is the best way of tackling these things. Now, you can deal with the top end of that through the taxation system, but the only way of dealing with the poverty trap is through universal benefits. When we finally learn that lesson as a country is the point when we return to being a civilised nation that cares for those people who have most need. So we will support the motion, we will support Jackie Porter's amendment, we're ambivalent about Labour's amendment because I think the first half is basically apologists. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Well, actually, what that's saying is divert the household support fund to older people from working age people and those who've got other issues, which are actually sometimes more desperate than older people. So diverting household support fund money to older people isn't a real benefit. So while we support the principle of the second half of Labour amendment, we can't support it in whole will abstain on the Labour amendment. Thank you, colleagues.
Councillor Fairhurst.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to disagree with what the Labour Party said about it being in their manifesto because as little as four months ago, Sir Keir Starmer wrote to his postal voters saying, and I'm quoting him now, "I know how much Britain's older generation have contributed to our country and the debt we owe them. I will always ensure that Britain's retirees get the security and respect they deserve. I will never betray Britain's pensioners." Well, that didn't last long, did it? But that's what he sent out. What offends me most about this is the timing to take away a benefit that lots of pensioners in my division rely on to ensure they can heat their homes this winter. Many of them are above the level for pension credit, and the paradox is that if they were below the level, applied for pension credit, they'd actually end up getting more money than those who are just above the limit. I think, I agree with the motion that Lib Dems have put up, I think it's a good motion, I'd like it added, but what I would really like is the government to withdraw back this year from withdrawing the winter fuel allowance and have a pause and think about the best way to do it in future. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fairhurst. Councillor Parker.
Well, thank you, Chairman. It's an interesting thing, this, isn't it, that we've now got a new measure to go along with Olympic swimming pools and double-decker buses for the size of things. So what we have now is a load of rises for engine drivers that equates to 50 pensioners' fuel allowances. So just hold that in your mind for a moment, because what we've got here is a disingenuous attempt to raid the pensioners in order to fund whatever else it is the Labour Party wants to do. Part of that is the engine drivers, there are other things, I don't doubt. But what we're left with is what appears to be a vindictive attack on pensioners who, by virtue of the wisdom of age, do not vote for Labour. So what we need to do is to understand how we're going to take this forward. Now, the Labour group has given us an amendment, and I'm grateful to them for that because it helps a lot. The first paragraph mimics the two paragraphs in the original motion about pension credit, so I don't have a problem with that, but we don't need it. And the first paragraph says that we should divert all of the household, what is it called? Household Support Fund to pensioners instead of to the general public. Now, that's what the Liberal Democrat amendment actually asks us to do, which is to emphasise the Household Support Fund for supporting the households not entitled to pension credit. Fully support that, and thank you to councillor Porter for moving it. So I'm afraid, Chairman, I cannot support the Labour amendment, I will support the Liberal Democrat amendment, and I will support the original motion as amended.
I've got another executive lead member who wants to speak, I'm not certain who that is.
Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Chat.
Thank you. So the Household Support Fund has been supporting families in vulnerable financial situations since during Covid. Both myself and councillor Salad helped with the process of that coming into place back then. It's still today very much needed by our families across Hampshire, very much so. We don't just support utility bills, we support community organisations to deliver services, we support community pantries with that, we support schools to help clothe children that go to their schools where families are just unable to make hens meat and provide a winter coat or sturdy shoes for them to go to school. We also support with food vouchers for some of our residents as well during our school holidays that get distributed via our districts and boroughs. We also support families that find themselves in difficulty with rent arrears as well with that support fund. So it has a whole complex scope of what support is given. I strongly feel that if we were, as we are being asked to by central government, to prioritise supporting pensioners, then maybe we couldn't do all of that that is being provided currently. So there are those families that truly need our support via those mechanisms that we distribute the money to and those organisations. The Household Support Fund is currently available to pensioners that do need it, and it is used as well for utility bills. So that option is there, it's just not used as much. But I really do feel concerned that if we do have to, if we are asked to prioritise pensioners, that all those other bits of that Household Support Fund, we will struggle to provide. Therefore, I will be supporting the motion today, I will be supporting the amendment, I cannot support the Labour motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Chat. Councillor Parker-Jones.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say how much I welcome councillor Porter and councillor Harrison's amendment because the one thing that became clear while I was reading the motion which has been put forward, which I fully support, is that there are many groups that are ignored and are missed out by the current fuel payments that are made, particularly our very vulnerable residents, perhaps people with mobility impairments, people who live in poor housing, which is cold and drafty, who really could also benefit from opportunities to keep warm. So I really, really welcome this, and I think it's an excellent amendment, so I shall be supporting the Liberal Democrats amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Irish.
Thank you, Chair. If you would forgive me from sitting down as well, because I do have a standing up problem as well. Maybe I should be declaring an interest here as a trustee of age concern Eastleigh because since this has been announced by the government, a lot of our members of Age Concern Eastleigh have been very, very concerned about how they're going to survive during the winter and how they're going to heat their homes, so I shall be supporting the Liberal Democrat amendment today. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Irish. Councillor James.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to stand and say I agree with councillor Stephen Reid, which normally means I'm wrong, but I hope I'm right today. I absolutely support the motion, it's a very complex issue, winter fuel allowance and changing from universality to need, such a complex issue, you tend to do it over a period of time and work out how you're going to do it fairly without creating a cliff edge for pensioners. I'm not one, I don't have to declare an interest, but I do have members of my family and party that are, and I want to protect and look after them. Obviously, I'll be supporting the Lib Dem amendment, it's very sensible to protect that Household Community Fund to support all the community, those who need it most, and it can be targeted, I do agree with targeting, it does need to be extended. There are lots of cracks in the benefit system, and that can help address some of those cracks whilst people get back on their feet. It's very difficult to support the Labour amendment, you clearly can't do both. Quite simply, we are supposed to welcome the allocation of 7.1 million pounds to the Household Support Fund. There are 318,000 pensioners in Hampshire, that means that winter fuel allowance would mean the government giving Hampshire around 96 million pounds, and now it's seven. I mean, that's austerity in a big way. I understand why Labour want to do austerity, I'm surprised they're quite so keen to do austerity, in the way they're doing it hurting the most vulnerable, and actually, their amendment now means the government will hurt the pensioners, and once it comes down to the local level, will hurt other vulnerable families that absolutely rely on this fund and don't have an alternative. So I'll be supporting the motion, supporting the Lib Dem amendment, but I can't support the Labour amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor James. Councillor Haye.
Thank you, Chairman. I wasn't intending to speak, my microphone was still on, but I will though. What I'd like to say is, I very welcome councillor Porter's amendment, however, I think we should have that as a separate motion maybe. There are two groups of our residents that we really, really want to look after, and that's children and elderly people. So because this one is more about pension credit and the fuel allowance, perhaps we should concentrate on the original motion and then bring out another motion for councillor Porter's amendment. But I do not support the Labour amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Collet.
Thank you, Chairman. There was a time when I was the youngest member in this chamber. Today, today I've had to declare that we receive the pension credit. I actually put my hand up, or pressed the button to put my hand up in order to make that declaration. I think everything that I would want to say has already been said, so I'll leave it there. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Collet. Councillor Burgess.
Chairman members, I fully support the original motion and also the motion put forward by the Liberal Democrats, but I have a question for the head of Legal Services. For a motion, or for a amendment to be put forward, it has to be proposed and seconded and handed out. The Labour one only has a proposal on it, so it's invalid for this debate.
Councillor Burgess, it was actually seconded in the chamber, which I understand is acceptable, but I take your point, it wasn't on the original paperwork that you had.
Well, everything is supposed to be on, you know, done properly, that isn't, I mean, I can't support it. That's the actual group or party that cut the fuel, winter fuel allowance. You know, we cannot support their motion.
Thank you, councillor Burgess. I've got councillor Curly Ford, I think you will speak at the end of the debate, is that correct?
My microphone's on, I might have it set.
Sorry?
If it's on now. Oh, it's on now.
We'll come back to you later, fine. Councillor Harvey. Councillor Harvey. Marge. Where is she? Oh, there you are.
Chairman, I didn't actually ask to speak, but I will. I would just, I will say that I can, I will accept the amendment and vote for the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harvey, you are on my list, but no matter. Councillor Henderson.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to thank councillor Curly Ford and councillor Minahan for bringing this motion to the chamber. In Hampshire, we have an aging population, and many are wartime children, and as one of my elderly residents said to me, "As a wartime child, you simply learnt to do without", and my concern is, there will be many pensioners in Hampshire who feel they should do without. I fully agree with councillor Fairhurst in saying that really, you need time to prepare for any sizeable change to life, don't you? And they've been given no time whatsoever. I also would like to support councillor Porter's amendment, I think the Household Support Fund does invaluable work, and we need to continue with it. But I'd like to thank councillors for bringing this motion to us.
Thank you, councillor Henderson. I think I missed out, councillor Craig, my apologies, if you'd like to speak now.
Thank you, Chair. Totally agree with everything that's been said so far, but wanted to make sure, we're asking for an awareness campaign to be run on this subject. Wanted to make sure that we're putting in there the help that's available to complete the forms. Sometimes these forms are very long-winded, I know of people that received forms and they look at the thickness of it and think, absolutely not, can I fill those out? So if we're doing an awareness campaign, we want to make sure that we have that in the process. And also, I just wanted to say, isn't it ironic that we're asking for the warm spaces and our library spaces to be out there when we've closed so many of them, so many of them are part-time as well, that they're really not fit for the warm spaces? But what I would like to ask is we make sure that warm spaces, those partnerships we've got, I know in ECU we've got churches, community halls, those types of things, that they go out, people haven't got a library they can use for warm spaces. So if we are serious about making sure that we're hitting our vulnerable people, we actually advertise those warm spaces to allow people to actually go out and get warm. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm totally in support of the motion and the amendment by the Liberal Democrats. In Gospport, we have around about 21% of those of pension age, it's around about 15,500 individuals. We've heard many of the argument, and I think just they're elaborating on the short notice and the change of the fuel allowance. That short notice of that change to fuel allowance has already created a lot of stress and heartache. It's going to create hard decisions for many to decide between fuel and food. There is obviously the wider impact on mental health, how they may decide to socialise, travel to see family members, and I think we have to note the wider impact on health and wellbeing. And I think we have to note the wider impact on health and wellbeing. That short notice of the change also limits the proactiveness of the wider third sector and charities to be able, to enable that support and response to those that may be impacted. I welcome the council's commitment to proposal to sign the winter fuel petition. I just want to remind members, you can actually do that personally yourself. Also on this platform, we've heard of many wider support, but I just want to draw attention to Connect to Support Hans, the Smarter Living, the Pantries, the Warm Hubs that we just mentioned there. In regard to the amendment, the Liberal Democrat amendment does strengthen this. I slightly agree with councillor Hare's comment that does it detract from what we're talking about here regarding winter fuel and specifically those of pension age. However, one of our objectives for Hampshire County Council is to support all those vulnerable, and that's what the Household Support does. And therefore, I think the Liberal Democrat amendment does strengthen that. And I can't support the Labour one because when we talk about those Household Support funds, our mean age in Gosport, but collectively across Hampshire, is around about early 40s. In Gosport, it's 43. The majority of our age is 25 to 64 of population of age. 20% have disabilities, 11% are lone parents, 16% are one-person households, and 21% indicate that they have fair to very bad health. If we accept and approve the Labour's amendment, then effectively, we are not protecting all those that are vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Huggins. Councillor Irish.
Chairman, yes, just to say that, as I said previously, I do support the motion, I do support the Liberal Democrat amendment, but I can't support the Labour amendment. I'm very sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Heron.
Chairman, thank you. First of all, I'm going to say, obviously, I support the motion and I support the Liberal Democrat amendment, but I really do want to talk about councillor Crawford's amendment. I was interested to hear in his speech that he knew ahead of the election that the government were going to find a £22 billion mystical black hole and were going to make a cut to winter fuel payments that wasn't in their manifesto. I just had a quick look, it's not there. So interesting to know that these things were planned. Chairman, there are always choices. Those of us in this chamber know that we have choices as a council. They become difficult and challenging. We have had to make choices coming into our budget and we are, the cabinet will have to on the 14th, choices between additional library books or changes against being able to support our most vulnerable young people and adults. That is the nature of being in a position of leadership and political control. So let's be clear, Labour made a choice to give a £16 billion rise to train drivers and they made a choice to make a £22 billion cut to vulnerable older people. That was a choice. As we come to this, I think all of us will recognise, and I am sure there are those in this room who have signalled today their personal interest, that there are those who are in the seat of the winter fuel payment who do not need it. Out and about in my area, I'm into people who think it's crazy that they would get it in, you know. Many of them choose to do something with that. They give it to charity, they spend it on food into food banks, they use it to support those very things that councillor Crawford was suggesting we cut, like community pantries, to try and plug a political choice of his government. Chairman, I can't support their amendment and I must say, I think it's a very sad point that that amendment was put forward in this way. You know, of course, I think any sensible government would over time and in a structured and careful way look at the winter fuel payment. I think the advice around the fact of making those who are paying higher income tax ineligible is a sensible first step. I think equally encouraging those who are able to donate it is sensible. I think cutting it now, if we're seeing fuel prices going up, cutting it now as an act of political choice and expediency, when you think you can get away and blaming it on others, is shameful. And let us remember, not all our elderly and vulnerable people have large political donors who can buy their clothes to keep them warm.
Thank you, councillor Heron. Councillor Glenn.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I rise and as you can see, I do have a bit of a throat problem, but I had no intention, actually. Sympathy, please. Bring it on. I had no intention of saying anything, but really, there's only so much I can take. There's only so much you can take when we're talking about something that's so important. This, as we all know, was a knee-jerk reaction by Rachel Reeves the minute she got power. Try to imagine, try to imagine the screaming and shouting this lot would be creating right now if the Conservative Party had done this. Can you imagine that? Difficult, but they'd be making a lot of noise and they'd be slamming us left, right and centre for it. And we're not doing that. And I don't know why. Okay. But as a result of this knee-jerk reaction, there are some people out there who are never going to vote Labour again. Well, good for them. And there is already one Labour Member of Parliament who decided to resign. Well, good for that late Member of Parliament. I hope there'll be more. Now, please remember, this was a decision that was made with the backdrop of all the top brass in the Labour Party getting donations, getting clothes, getting gifts, getting money. The hypocrisy, the place is dripping with hypocrisy. I'm surprised no one's mentioned that word yet. Now, if we, with regard to the Labour amendment, the point they're making is that we've got time, oh yes, we've got time, to get all the forms out and we can make up the difference for all those who need help with their heating. Well, I know we're very good at working fast, but we've only got three months and that's not going to happen that quickly. So we have to ask ourselves, if we do follow the Labour amendment, where does the money come from to feed the most needy? Once we have given them the heating they require? I remember as a boy going around, when I was in Scotland, going around with actually members of the family canvassing, and people would say to us, I can either put on the heating or I can either give you some food, but I can't do both. Or I can put on the lighting, but I couldn't do all three. Now, that's what's going on out there. And I'd like to remind you, it's middle England that's suffering from poverty, not just those who are just off the pension line. There's a lot of close poverty right across the country and that's not been addressed. Oh, by the way, when I watched the results go up, I was astounded that basically 50% of the councillors who were obviously below the age of 65 felt they didn't have to declare an interest. Well, it won't be long, you young people, when you're not going, when you hit 65 and you're not going to get the heating allowance. So as far as I'm concerned, you do have an interest. Okay? Now, Liz Fairhurst quite rightly said, we need a pause because we just can't work this fast. Now, if we get the pause, then we could actually maybe take up Mel Kendall's idea of the taxing, which I thought was first class. But let's talk about the knock-on issues. I, not long ago, was a guest of a charity that wraps Christmas presents for children that never get them. Now, that sounds all very well, but the speaker said, I want you to try and imagine what it's like for a toddler who has never had a wrapped Christmas present ever in its life being given one. The sheer joy...
Councillor Glenn, you've got 30 seconds left.
Thank you. Is overpowering. So I doubt there'll be as much money going into that charity now because we've had the heating allowance taken away. So I support our motion, I support the Liberal Democrat amendment, and I totally repudiate the socialist tightrope walk.
Thank you, councillor Glenn. Councillor Warwick.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members, for an excellent debate. The removal of the winter fuel payment was a rushed announcement amongst several very bizarre announcements that was pushed through without appropriate scrutiny. Councillor James alluded to 300,000 affected pensioners in Hampshire. It's estimated there is around 800,000 pensioners in the UK that are eligible but don't claim the pension credit. And charities are now working really hard to try and help those individuals who have many challenges that come with older age in completing a 243-question form that, once completed, takes nine weeks to process. So I guess we're well into winter by then. But it also highlights the cost of means testing. Anything is not a straightforward yes-no decision. Winter fuel payment is a lifeline for those who need it, with estimated more than 50% of those who receive it spend it directly on their energy bills. The issue, of course, directly affects Hampshire County Council and our Hampshire residents. We have seen members, as we've gone through those detailed scrutiny panels around our SP25 savings proposals, that one of our most significant cost pressures is adult social care. And of course, challenged by our own elderly demographic, which is something to be celebrated, but at the same time means we have a significant population affected by this unplanned cut. Our elderly worry about bills, my own mother included, and they will switch everything off and manage without heating. Many, of course, unlike us, are housebound. Some are immobile, many are frail, and all of them will have reduced body fat. And as you know, as your body temperature falls, your heart speeds up to compensate for that. It's a natural reaction that raises your blood pressure and then increases the risk of heart attack and stroke. Respiratory illness is also exacerbated by cold air. So all this is very likely to increase our hospital admissions and in turn, creating additional unwanted pressure on our social care services. This allowance, members, was a safety net for those most at risk. So I support this motion and I support councillor Porter's amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Warwick. Councillor Kemp-Gee.
Thank you, Chairman. As someone with a degree in economics, I was somewhat intrigued by councillor House's description of recent economic events in this country. Was this the party that provided Danny Alexander to be Chief Secretary to the Treasury between 2010 and 2015 during the Osborne-Alexander years of austerity? Was this, in fact, the Liberal Democrat Party that supported this country's dire need during the pandemic, where special help was given by the Conservative Party and rightly so to all those in work and also those in need of support for household expenses? Was this the Liberal Democrat Party that supported the Conservative government with all that extra help for fuel bills during the invasion of Ukraine by Russia? I suggested more attention to current economic policy, which suggests that at the general election, both the Liberal Democrat Party and the Conservative Party did not suggest any alteration in fuel allowance to pensioners and nor did the Labour Party. And as councillor Mel Kendall has said, the black hole didn't exist at £22 billion before the election, only did it so full emerge afterwards. £10 billion of that is, of course, from pay rises to various classes of the workforce and also, of course, to what is called in economic terms, in near economic pressures that every government has to endure. The black hole as such is frankly just a mixture of all the problems we've had over the past few years to do with Covid and the Ukraine. So I think actually, we can now combine with the Lib Dems to actually promote our policies that we expressed in the last general election. And therefore, it's a great pleasure to support the Liberal Democrats and their amendment.
Thank you, councillor Kemp-Gee. Councillor Tree.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I just ask, for avoidance of doubt, the Lib Dem amendment, that adds this paragraph to the bottom of the original motion? That's correct. Just, okay. So, I mean, on that basis, I very much enjoyed watching the Conservative, Labour, Lib Dem debate as an independent, to genuinely listen to what's said and form a choice. I'm thinking that the original motion is a good motion. I'll support it. I think the Lib Dem amendment adds to it, complements it, and so I'll support that. I think that the challenge with the Labour motion is simply that it's, I can't take the paragraph at the bottom out of the motion and support that, which perhaps would have complemented it too. I think it's challenging, it's fascinating to stand here and watch, obviously, the Labour Group now, as the government's representatives in the chamber, taking the bashing. Obviously, we also in this chamber have to make very difficult decisions as well. And I would just say, as interesting as this debate is and as important as it is, of course, I hope we'll have many more debates over issues that the county council can actually control because there's lots and lots of issues and savings that we're looking to make over important issues that we're not discussing today at full council. So that's my position. I will try and vote accordingly to get to my wish list, which would be Conservative motion with Labour amendment added and the bottom of the Labour motion, but unfortunately, I don't get that specific choice. And my final observation, just on means testing, we talked about families and children here a bit today as well, but of course, child benefit is now income-based. And if somebody is paid child benefit and their partner earns, they or their partner earns over £50,000, or I can't remember the exact threshold, 50, 60, they actually have that money clawed back if they, and have to file a self-assessment tax return. So, you know, just to create consistency, I don't have the exact answer and I'm not an MP in Parliament debating the specifics. That's not my role. My role is to be a county councillor and debate what we do here. But that's just an observation. But no, I think there's been lots of valid points made in the chamber today and I think there is some cross-party consensus. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tree. Councillor Tree.
Thank you, Chairman. We've heard some wide-ranging and interesting and, dare I say, memorable speeches this morning. This may prove to be not one of them. I, like many in this room, will hold constituency and ward surgeries. And I've had many people come into my surgery, which I hold monthly. One of the things I needed to do in preparation was, and I did it for a personal reason, was to try and see if there was any benefit I could receive. And if I was entitled to a benefit, then I would retain my £300. It proved to be an interesting exercise for those who came to my surgery because so many of them who came wanted help. They needed still the £300, but they were unable so often to know how to go about getting the benefit to which they were entitled. The forms aren't easy. They do need help and guidance. And I think that is something that we, as members of this chamber, are able to do. One couple came to see me and their remark has remained with me.
One couple came to see me and their remark has remained with me. Their simple remark was this. As far as Labour is concerned, pensioners do not matter. As far as Labour is concerned, pensioners do not matter. And that has stayed with me during this whole debate. It is those people for whom we need to be addressing and fighting. And I do believe that the Labour Party and the government has been so misguided in treating pensioners in this appalling way. It is wholly wrong. And I cannot possibly support the Labour government, the Labour amendment that has come before us this morning. I have to say, if I was a member of the Labour group in this chamber, I'd keep my mouth shut and that would be the wisest councillor of all. I can support the other amendments.
Thank you, councillor Thery. Councillor Forster.
Thank you, Chair. This is an interesting debate. I guess I should pick up on what councillor Glenn said. I didn't declare an interest because I'm not of retirement age, not 65. Well, it's actually not 65 anymore, but I will be at some point. The Household Support Fund was brought in by the last government and sadly, that support has only been extended by a very few months by the current government with no increase for inflation or anything like that. There's a lot of concern about the future and the future is going to hit many of us. Importantly, there's no extra money over what was previous, just a bit of extra time. And the Labour amendment is therefore actually quite harmful. It seems councillor Crawford is suggesting we actually take away money from vulnerable who currently need and have been receiving it. Many likely in his own area, which is a deprived area. It'll have impact on them and their families. I'm also intrigued by why his amendment doesn't want the council to lead on effective communications. We're good at that, so why remove it? I therefore cannot support Labour's proposed harmful change, which detracts from the good things that the Conservative motion would achieve and the Liberal amendments, which enhance it. I'm therefore happy to support both of those.
Thank you, councillor Forster. Next, I ask for the leader of the council.
Chairman, thank you. I think this debate this morning and running into this afternoon has given us a perfect example of where we are at our best in this place in terms of representing our residents, putting forward sensible suggestions and bringing forward ideas that we can consider. And I welcome councillor Tree's suggestion that this should happen more often. It's always entirely at your discretion that you should be able to do that. It's equally always nice for the independents because they can look at the rest of us who belong to parties and cast us all aside as they need, largely because they have no hint of power. And that's something that it might be said of the Lib Dems as well. And with power comes choices. With power comes decisions that must be made. And therefore, I feel for the Labour group in the sense that it is now their turn to feel the sting of people's disapproval when they have to make decisions. And I've got to say that councillor Taylor's argument was well argued. But I'm afraid I can't support it. And the reason I can't support it is it comes down to the money and the choices that we need to make. When the Household Support Fund was created, and it was created, as we've been reminded by councillor Kemp G, of the pressures of economics and of why we needed the Household Support Fund in the first place, post-pandemic, with the war in Ukraine, with the energy crisis that followed, it was set at a level at which it has remained. So we received £7.1 million for the first half of this year. We've now received £7.1 million for the second half of the year. Councillor Chad has given us a perfect example of all of the different things that we spend that money upon. If we are now to prioritise pensioners, as the Labour amendment would suggest that we should do, as if we've not been spending that money on anything important, then that would mean that somebody else has to lose out. And those people that will lose out are the people who are most vulnerable and are reliant upon it already. They are the families who need support. They are the children who require our help during holiday periods to receive the hot meals and the food upon which they thrive. My thanks to councillors Porter and Harrison, Jackie and David, who have brought forward, as always, an erudite and succinct amendment, which I'm very happy to support. I think it's contingent on us to remember what councillor James said. Gavin told us there are 317,000 of our fellow residents of Hampshire who are pensioners and who are affected by this. And I've got to say that councillor Craig's point about making sure that we point those people at the places where they can receive support to complete the applications for pension credit is a well-made one and I will ensure that we make that case and we provide that information, any of the publicity that we provide as a result of this amendment. Colleagues, this has been a good debate. I thank our Liberal Democrat colleagues for bringing forward their amendment. I'm very happy that we support that. I also thank the Labour group for putting their head above the parrot bit and making a suggestion as well. I'd be happy to support that if the Labour government had given us more money as part of the Household Support Fund. They haven't. We've got the same amount of money as we had in the first six months of the year. We've got the same amount of money as we had last year. And there are already very many people who call upon that support. So I'm afraid I will not be supporting that amendment. Mr Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, leader. I've got councillor Crawford who's asked to speak. I'm afraid you don't have the rights. I've been told legally to respond. So I'm going to go straight over to councillor Collier-Ford to wind up the debate.
Thank you very much, chairman. I thank the members for their debate. It's been very lively, very interesting. In response to the amendment from the Lib Dems, I'm very happy to accept that. I do take on board councillor Powell's suggestion that it may be a separate motion, but I'm more than happy that that amendment is included because that is such a crucial topic. I'm sorry, I will not be supporting the Labour amendment. I actually feel that to water down the communications and awareness programme aspect of this motion is wrong. As councillor Craig's already said, the awareness campaign is really important. Vulnerable pensioners quite often need help, need signposting. And I have to say, in my division, to that end, our new MP is setting up surgeries so that we can actually help the pensioners. So thank you very much for the debate and thank you for everybody's input.
Thank you, councillor Collier-Ford. We now come, first of all, to vote on councillor Crawford's amendment and then we vote on the Liberal Democrat amendment. And depending upon the results of those two votes, we then vote on the substantive motion. So first of all, can we have the screen up for-
Please, not on screen, just a show of hands.
Oh, right, sorry, yes. We're going to go down the show of hands route, which of course is a bit quicker. So first of all, the motion proposed, the amendment proposed by councillor Crawford. All those in favour? All those against? That particular amendment is defeated. Moving on to councillor Parker's amendment. Porter, sorry, councillor Porter's amendment. All those in favour? Any against? That passes and therefore forms part of the substantive motion. And therefore, we will now vote on the substantive motion. Are we doing that electorally? Right. And we'll do that with a show of hands. All those in favour of the motion put before the council at the beginning of this debate? Sorry. Sorry, as amended.
But I'd like to call for a recorded vote on this, please, if I may.
You need 10 people to stand up with you. All right, okay. Right, the vote will be a recorded one. And just to remind you, this is on the substantive motion as amended by the amendment proposed by councillor Porter. It's on the screen now for you to vote. Has everyone voted? The motion is carried by a substantial majority with three abstentions. Okay, thank you for that. That was a very stimulating debate. And now we move on to part two of the- Part two, item 11, Hampshire and Isle of Wight Fire and Rescue Authority. To confirm, there's been no questions being submitted and therefore I invite councillor Vaughan, chairman of the Hampshire and Isle of Wight Fire and Rescue Authority, to present his report.
Thank you, chairman. There's just one thing I wish to add and it's reference the opening of the new fire station at Cauchembe, which we opened about a month ago. And it's a cracker. I do advise people, if they want to go and have a look at it, it will greatly enhance the lives of our firefighters, those who work in it. And if any member wishes to go and have a look at it, and I do suggest you do, either let me know or someone in the fire service and we will ensure that you are made a fuss of when you get there. If I have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. At lunchtime.
Questions or debate? Okay. Well, that's it. I close the meeting just in time for lunch.